All right, let's do roll call. Let the record reflect, all council members are present with the exception of Mayor Lands, who, Mayor Lands tonight is up in.
One second. Vice Mayor. AV, guys, we're not seeing the feed. Got to make sure it's recording properly. We're only seeing our city attorney right now. Where should we see him? The dais. What?
Sorry, we're waiting on our feed for the recording.
For anyone who's wondering who's on the screen, that's our city attorney. He's joining us via Zoom tonight. Until I see you guys at the dais, we're going to. There we go. That's the view I'm looking for.
Thank you. All right, back to the roll call. Well, all council members are present and back to, with the exception of Mayor Lands, who is up in Lake County doing another town hall for the Potter Valley Project. He was called on to be one of the panelists up there. So hopefully he brings back some more information or, you know, updated information or anything on the Potter Valley Project from their point of view up there. So thank you. Conflict interest declarations, do we have any? Seeing none? Any changes or deletions?
No changes.
Okay, we'll move into public comments. Any person wishing to speak in person or on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker. Do we have any public comments? Please state your name for the record, too.
Hi, I'm Brooke Green. I know most of you. I'm the Library Commissioner for Cloverdale, but I'm speaking on my own behalf this evening. I want to appreciate you for your upcoming proclamation proclaiming June as Pride Month and your publicity for the flag raising at City Hall. Your statement is that Cloverdale is celebrating love in all forms. City Council will be officially proclaiming June as Pride Month, and we're inviting everyone to join us in front of City Hall on Sunday, June 1st, at 12:00 PM, to raise the pride flag and kick off the month with unity, joy, and a reminder that inclusivity starts here at home. So I thank you. Libraries also celebrate inclusivity and belonging. Nine cities in Cloverdale, nine libraries in Cloverdale are having, in Sonoma County, are having public pride flag raisings. Cloverdale has declined. Cloverdale is definitely an outlier by not participating in this, and I'm disappointed in you. I'd like, I understand that this is a policy, and I would like you to reconsider this policy in future years to conform to this city's stated values. As you say in your public statement, let's show that in our community, love gets a front row seat. Please reconsider this if anyone would like to see all of the other cities in the county that are doing this.
Thank you, Brooke. Is there any other public comments? Seeing none? Okay, and then we have item B2, we have written comment. We did receive one, but I would like to move that or to, to the standing item, if that's okay.
Potter Valley standing item.
Yeah. So we'll get to that one. We'll move B2, the standing item of the Potter Valley, and discuss that. All right, student liaison report. Keiko, that's you.
Vice Mayor. This week is the second to last week for the school year at the Cloverdale Unified School District. Students are on their final stretch and getting ready to enjoy their summers. The middle school is preparing to celebrate their completion of the school year with a dance following the eighth grade promotion. Both events will be held on June 5th. The high school is celebrating their last normal school weeks before finals with one last spirit week. Last Friday, the seniors enjoyed an amazing trip to the Santa Cruz Beach Boardwalk, along with a complimentary lunch and hours to enjoy the park. Seniors this Tuesday also spent all night creating a fun and elaborate prank as one last send-off. They stuck photos of teachers on the walls, created an entire wedding venue, only for it to be cleaned up before anyone could get to school. Spring sports are wrapping up. A banquet was held to congratulate all spring sports. These includes baseball, softball, track, and tennis. Congratulations to the varsity softball for coming in second for league. And finally, the student liaisons have their final meeting, giving one last report to the lovely City Council. We thank you for having us here and the opportunity you have given us. And for one final time, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Keiko. Do we have, Keiko, do we have any comments? Final comments? This is her last one, her Yada, who I see out in the audience right now. Any comments for her?
I'm going to UC Riverside for mechanical engineering.
Well, you, Yada. That's right. Okay. All I have to say is thank you guys for showing up. This is a pretty big commitment, and I would like to, in the small amount of time you have left, if you could, give us a hand and see if you can recruit any of the juniors out there and tell them it's a good deal. Tell them not to step out of their comfort zone a little bit and come on up. We'd love to have them, and we'd love to have two again. So that'd be awesome. And I thank you guys very much for doing what you did. All right. Let's move into some proclamations. Cloverdale Police Department, oath of office for Sergeant Damien Eaglesfield and Beau Gastineau. Chief?
Oh, no, I'm good. Short. Oh, thank you. Vice Mayor, council members, city manager. It's my pleasure to introduce a couple of outstanding officers here today who wrote it. I'm going to introduce each one of them to you. I'll have them come down and stand next to me while I read their bios. And the first person is Sergeant Beau Gastineau. Didn't come down? Most of the community knows Beau. He's grown up here. He was actually promoted January 8th, 2025, was involved in an accident, as you guys probably know about, and just recently returned back to full duty. Beau is a proud Cloverdale native, who is, whose lifelong connection to the community continues to shape his service in law enforcement. He lives in Cloverdale with his wife, Brittany, their three sons, Grayson, Bennett, and Tate, proudly raising the next generation in town that has always been their home. He's a graduate of the Cloverdale High School of 2011. He attended, he attended the College of Redwoods, where he played basketball and completed the police academy in 2013. He began his career at the Cloverdale Police Department in 2015, earning recognition for his proactive approach to drug enforcement and commitment to the community-oriented policing. Known for his leadership both on and off duty, Beau has been actively involved in coaching youth sports, reinforcing his deep investment in wellbeing of the local families. His area of expertise include community engagement, drug enforcement, traffic investigation, and serving as a field training officer. He now is in charge of the field training program. And his dedication and service were formally recognized in January 2025, when he was promoted as the rank sergeant. My pleasure to introduce Beau Gastineau. Supposed to also tell you he was the MVP for the Chargers back in, when he was a little... Said I had to say it. I had to say it. The next person is Damien Eaglesfield. Sergeant Eaglesfield was promoted in April 2025, April 25th, 2025, which is a mouthful. Interesting enough, he was born in London, England, and immigrated to San Jose, California in 1980. He lived in San Jose, I'm a San Jose native, until 1990, but began spending most of his summers here in Cloverdale after his grandparents bought a home here in 1985. Damien moved to Cloverdale in his freshman year of high school. During, during high school, he worked at the Cloverdale Fire Department. In the, in the, in the summers, I lost my mind where I was at. In the summers, he became a police officer explorer at the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office and the Hillsburg Police Department. After graduating, Damien enlisted in the United States Air Force as a law enforcement specialist and stationed at the McClellan Air Force Base in Sacramento and deployed to Cuba, Kuwait, and Saudi Arabia. Damien returned to the Cloverdale, returned to Cloverdale after his enlistment, but continued to serve in the Air Force as a reservist at the Travis Air Force Base and attended the Central Junior College, majoring in administrative justice. Following the September 11th attacks, Damien returned to active duty for an additional year in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. After his military service, Damien returned to Sonoma County graduate, Sonoma County, graduated from the police academy and became a code red police officer in 2005. His specialties within the department include being a field training officer, firearms instructor, collision investigator, and currently is in charge of the firearms program. Damien Eaglesfield. Minister of the Oath of Office. So I'll just hold it. Right here. Raise your right hand. I state your name. solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will, and faithfully discharge the duties upon, which I'm about to enter. So we'll have a, I think Brittany is doing the badge pinning for Beau. And Damon, where's Damon's uncle?
Hey, chief?
Yes?
Can we come down and get a picture with the two new sergeants?
You bet. And then I try, if anybody wants to come down after they take a photo, because this is a community thing, right? You guys can come down and take a photo with us.
Awesome. Thanks, chief. Right, any of the council members have any comments? I just got one thing. Hey, Beau and Damien, thanks, man. I know you're trying to get out of here and all that, but we appreciate what you guys do, so keep it going. Now chief's got, now hopefully chief can train people on how to cook ribs. I don't see that coming, but maybe. All right. All right, let's move into D2, student liaison participant recognition and scholarship presentation, and the recipients are our student liaison, Keiko, and also Yada. Who's doing that?
So for this item, it's a little informal. We used to do press conferences. We're not going to put that kind of pressure on you. Can we turn that mic up a little bit? Thank you, sir. So the student liaison program, which you can see on the screen up here, I'm not sharing it with Zoom, sorry, but it's basically an opportunity for the high school students, usually a senior, but it's often a junior and a senior, to participate in public government. They get to sit up here at the dais, they get to give a report, they often give feedback on items, and we just want to congratulate both of our student liaisons this year with their scholarship funds. We typically hand these out once they are successfully admitted into a college, which both of these two have been. So we decided we're going to do it a little more formally and do it out of meeting. So if you can both, go ahead, Keiko, if you want to hang out down there. These council members might have a few questions for you about the program itself, what you learned from it, what you think maybe we could do better, and then we're going to present you guys with your scholarships. You two, yep. So council members, if you have any questions for them, feel free to ask, but ultimately one of our goals is to fix the audio in this building. It's one of our big goals. Check, check. So yeah, I'll start with the first question. What did you like most about this program? Understandably, it's a program you had to work for, but what did you gain out of it? What did you like? Either one, that's up to you. We'll let you rotate.
All right, I'll go first. I think that my favorite part was just meeting everybody here. I feel like it's a great opportunity. Yeah, anything to add to that?
From my personal experience, because I've been here for doing this for two years, I think it was such an amazing opportunity for me because it was very different for me because I was there before we had to do the election and after for the new people, for the city members. So it's definitely a cool, like a really interesting experience to see how I see familiar faces and then new faces, so I think it's pretty cool.
Do you think it was helpful on your college applications?
From my personal experience, because I am going just to the JC, I didn't, I just really needed just my grades in a sense, but for me personally, I think that I, outside of like, from going here, I could just brag about being, hey, I'm on the excluded council, I'm on the council, met with, like, I'm like working with these people. So I just think for me, it was just more of a cool thing to be able to brag and also be able to be confident in the sense that, oh, it's like a new learning experience.
I get to go to meetings every week.
So would you say after this experience that maybe you would consider working in leadership in the future or government?
Well, I'm more interested in engineering, if I'm being honest, but if there's an opportunity within that, then maybe, maybe I could come to a couple of meetings and speak about engineering stuff.
I think from my experience, because I'm going into a major where it definitely is where you have to step up and do, like, you have to definitely be a lot of very, it's very about communication also about research, so I think, I feel like through this experience, I could definitely work with doing leadership things, so.
Great. Yep. Good luck in your future, and you never know where life's going to take you. Thank you. One more for you two. Hey, I know I said help recruit. You got, what, a week and a half left? You need to, you need to step up and get us two people. So, there you go. But hey, congratulations, you guys both did an outstanding job. I know you stepped out a little, and it's going to help you, believe me. So, good luck in college. All right. All right, so the last part, go ahead. Clap them up.
All right, so my favorite part about the student liaison program is that it is a scholarship-based program, so both of these, they get $750 each per year. However, for example, Yada worked last year by herself, so she got twice the money last year and half of it this year. So we got some giant checks for you to take. We're going to keep them, but we need to take pictures of you with them. So Yada, that's yours. Right the money there. I know, I thought it'd be fun. So we're going to take some pictures of you with council with these. I'm pretty sure. Maybe I will, maybe I won't, maybe. If you put it up on your wall. You can be in it. Three, two, one. Perfect, and then I'm going to get one of each of you with your individual checks. Oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead. All right, and then we're going to get a picture of each of you individually with your check. This is how we're going to try to entice some more students to come next year. I'd also like to commend both of them, they were both student athletes as well, so they went to school, went to sports, and still made a commitment to the city council and to our city. So let's give it up, one more big round of applause. All right, I'll go ahead and swap those out for real money. Here you go. Perfect, and go ahead and cash them in, good luck in college. Executive decision, you can have one. We're going to duck $30 off of each of those checks.
Eddie, thank you again, guys. Now let's move into the Cloverdale K-9 photo contest winner, first and second place recipients. So.
All right, if you didn't notice in the audience, we are not just humans today. Right, if you can confirm in the booth that you're seeing that on Zoom and the audience is seeing that. So recently Cloverdale, in an effort to, we launched a social media platform on Instagram recently, as well as we already had a Facebook, but in the interest of getting more folks engaged on our relatively previously very stagnant social media pages, our goal was to liven it up, engage a little bit more, public marketing outreach, and we thought, what more fun than a dog photo competition? There's lots of dogs in Cloverdale. Mine is pictured above. She was not in the competition, don't worry. But Cloverdale K-9 Crew Photo Contest, and what that entailed, and I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, in the interest of time, folks had to follow along, that means follow us on Facebook and/or Instagram. Did not show one up there? I don't know. We're still issuing some AV tech stuff. I think that's because we need the new TV. It's just not feeding. So they had to follow along Facebook or Instagram, take a photo and submit it to us, tagging us in the photo, tagging us being at City of Cloverdale. And then bonus points were given, one point per dog, if they were in a public open space, like one of our parks, in front of the police station, at City Hall, et cetera. So we have some prizes, as you can see down here if you're live, first prize and second prize. We, the city, put about $100 into this prize pool, and Doggone It, the new little plug for them, because they donated quite a bit of money as well. So a lot of these prizes, obviously, if any of you want a dog, no, you can't get that much stuff for $100. It was all donated from Doggone It, so we really appreciate them. And next, if this presentation will move forward, as you can see, lots of dogs submitted, quite a few in front of Cloverdale areas, all of which are Cloverdale residents. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of going to one of our second grade classes, and they got to announce each dog as they came up on screen with their name, which was adorable because you had about 30 students yelling out, "Fido!" It was really cute. So once they saw them all, they voted. We got a little drumroll here, and each kid got to pick three dogs, their top three dogs out of the prize pool. Out of the pool of dogs, we got enough prizes. And they decided they wanted to share that with you in second place. Mookie is our number two dog in Cloverdale today. Is Mookie here in the audience? Said they might be able to attend? Okay, well, if they're not here, they can pick up their prides at City Hall. Spoke with them a little earlier, they said they'd probably be able to make it, but it looks like they couldn't, but we'll go. That was Mookie right there. I'll go back so you can all see, because it's a pretty cute dog. They took their picture at The Beet, one of the restaurants downtown. They like to call themselves Mookie the Disco Dog because they got disco all over the place. So they got our second place prize down there. And then the second graders, by vote, selected the winner. And the winner is...
Buddy.
So by popular demand, Buddy won, and Buddy is in the audience with us today, which is now Cloverdale's top dog. That's Buddy, for those of you who can't see Buddy over there. But they got their top prize. Thank you for following us. Thank you for everybody that participated. If we can go ahead and get a picture of Buddy with their prize package, then you can go ahead and take it home with you. And if they have any, if the council has any questions for Buddy.
Up, down, up, down.
Here you go, if you'd like to address.
Buddy has lived in Cloverdale for eight years. He is superiorly, he's motivated by food. He loves great pets. He works part-time at Jay Rickards Winery, and he loves everybody that he comes in contact with. Actually, for those coffee?
And you mind holding up the prize? Well, Keith's a sad, he's Cloverdale's dog now. Congratulations. All right, now we can do the next one, which is gonna be the Public Works Week proclamation, and then we can get the rest of the audience out of here. So, let's have Councilmember Lasky go ahead and read that, please.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, declaring May 18th through the 24th, 2025, Public Works Week in the City of Cloverdale. That's you guys. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Cloverdale, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in the City of Cloverdale to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and acknowledge the hard work of the many public works workers providing important infrastructure to the City of Cloverdale citizens, and whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, recognized by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Vice Mayor Wheeler do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th, 20, through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, dated May 28th, 2024, so ordered by Brian Wheeler, Vice Mayor. Derek, would you like to come up and present?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, council members, my name's Derek Montani, I'm the Public Works Director, and I have the opportunity of working with these great individuals every day. Every day, the Public Works Team quietly behind the scenes works on your city. Their impact is anything but quiet. Our crew is responsible for maintaining more than 23 center lane miles of paved streets throughout the city. These streets connect homes, schools, parks, businesses, and serve for the foundation of safety, accessibility, for all of our residents. In addition to our streets, our Public Works Team is responsible for maintaining critical public infrastructure, including the municipal water distribution system, wastewater collection system, storm drain systems, which are all governed by growing construction environmental Among other facilities that they are responsible for, the City of Cloverdale Municipal Airport is under the care of the Public Works Department. Maintaining grounds, maintaining aviation support infrastructure, our crew plays a key role in supporting this regional asset to support fire and EMS services. From striping crosswalks, to repairing water mains, to ensuring ADA compliance and walkways throughout the city, our team does it all with diligence, pride, and professionalism. Today, I want to extend my gratitude to every member of our Public Works staff, your dedication keeps the city running safe and reliable every day. Thank you very much.
Bring it.
And I think we have a couple of members of our Public Works Department here.
Hold on, Derek, real quick, I just wanna bring it up here, does anybody up here on the dais have any comments?
Just wanna thank you guys, you did a great job, and really appreciate it.
Like Derek, Hector, and crew, what you guys do is, you're kinda unsung heroes amongst the citizens, what you do is, is people driving by don't realize that somebody had to maintain the bushes, the streets, the parks, you know, somebody was doing that. Like for me, I work out of town most of the time, so when I come back into town and the town's looking nice, it's, we appreciate what you do, thank you.
Yeah, this proclamation's for you guys, so come on up.
Hold on, we still have more comments.
I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you do, and I know you're out there in all kinds of heavy-duty weather when everyone else is snug in their homes, and thank you so much.
I got one thing too, I mean, everybody out there, not just council or everybody, and like, kinda mirror what Derek said, what Mark said, this place looks great, we got a source of pride coming here, so instead of, you know, you have the ability to put in a service request, but I'd say, go and thank these guys, you know, even when they're working, stop, talk to them, find out what's going on, those ideas go a long ways, have patience, and I know it's a hard job, it's hot, and I went around and you see me driving around town all over the place, I'm not checking on anybody, I'm just looking how nice this looks, and what improvements we can do, and they're doing them, man, the parks look awesome right now, so enjoy them, and thank these guys when they're down there, because they're putting a lot of effort into it, so thank you guys, I appreciate it, I think the town appreciates it.
My name's Bob Cox, I lived in Cloverdale for a number of years, and I've spent some time on the dais, both as a planning commissioner and a city council, but even before that, fellow council member Joe Pala and I started Movies On First some 16 years ago, and the Public Works Department was very supportive of that, and they allowed us to do what we did, they did most of the heavy lifting. Since then, about eight years ago, as the administrator of the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, they've always made sure that the banners were up in time, or taken down in time for Memorial Day, for Veterans Day, so I really wanna appreciate, give them my appreciation, and all of the work they do, in addition to their normal stuff, they seem to find time to do the extra stuff, so I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, if I may say a couple of things?
Yeah.
Thank you for your time, just wanted to make a quick introduction to the new members of our team, the Public Works Department. We got Jonathan Martinez, just started with us a couple days ago, Jonathan, if you can please stand up. Then we also got Corey Waddles, just started a couple days ago as well. Just to make a, make a quick note, all these guys, I know they're kinda shy back there, but they're all Cloverdallians, they all grew up here, they all graduated from Cloverdale High School, their families are here, and I'm just, I'm excited to see all the projects that we're gonna undertake now that we're fully staffed, so thank you for coming out here, I know Brandon's out there with his daughter out front, so, so thanks again, appreciate it.
Picture. Front and center. We just, we should acknowledge Derek and Bobby too, who, you know, they're doing the desk work, and there's a lot of that too, and it's, it's very complicated, and Derek's really stepping up, and thank you Bobby for all the work you're doing too. Picture. Another award. All right, moving on, let's do another proclamation for Lyme Disease Awareness Month.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, recognizing May 2025 as Lyme and Tick-Borne Diseases Awareness Month in Cloverdale. Whereas Lyme disease is the fastest-growing vector-borne disease in the United States caused by the bacterium Borrelia borodorfere, and is transmitted by the common black-legged tick found in nearly one-half of all US counties, and whereas ticks that carry Lyme disease can also carry at least 15 other pathogens, many of them transmitted within minutes of being bitten, with one painless tick bite frequently resulting in multiple infections, including bacteria, parasites, and viruses, and whereas the risk of contracting Lyme disease can be year-round, the nymphal ticks, which are the size of a poppy seed, are most active in the spring. Tick bites are nearly painless, with fewer than 50% of patients with Lyme disease able to recall a tick bite, and fewer than 50% reporting a bullseye rash, and whereas Lyme disease infects more than 300,000 people annually in the United States, yet testing for Lyme disease remains only 50% accurate, with the average patient going two or more years before getting a proper diagnosis, and whereas Lyme disease is an under-reported illness, therefore the actual number of people with Lyme disease in Cloverdale is likely 10 times the reported number of cases, and whereas Lyme disease is a complex, multi-system illness, which if caught, which if caught early can be treated, but if left untreated can invade the nervous system, heart, and multiple organs of the body, causing years of pain, suffering, severe disability, and even death, and whereas children are at the highest risk for contracting Lyme disease, it is the responsibility of every community to educate the public about the signs, symptoms, treatment, and how to prevent Lyme disease, whereas the best protection against tick-borne diseases are prevention, education, and early treatment. Now therefore be it resolved that I Vice Mayor Wheeler do hereby proclaim May 2025 Lyme Disease Awareness Month in Cloverdale, California, dated May 28, 2025, so ordered by Brian Wheeler, Vice Mayor.
All right, let's move into, we have no presentations, we'll move into the consent calendar, all items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council, unless any council member or a member of the public request that an item be removed and considered separately. Do we have?
I'd like to make a motion to move the consent calendar forward.
Second, okay, we have that, let's do a voice vote, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
And now, new business, what we have is, we have, we all, I'm sure got the emails on the vote coming up, the 12th of June, at the, at the Mayor Council Member Meeting, and we're gonna be voting for the ABAG, America, or what is it, it's the Association of Area Government, and we've got some letters from a, for the primary is Susan Adams and Frank Quint, Susan Adams being from Ronert Park, and Frank Quint from Petaluma, and then the alternate is Stephen Zolman from Sebastopol, there is one seat for primary and one for alternate, so I just wanted to go, starting you over there, we'll just come down the dais and, and find out what you wanna do, because I will be up there at that meeting, and this'll be the vote that I'll be making, so I'm gonna follow your lead on this, so who do you got?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I got Susan Adams as a primary and Stephen Zolman as alternate.
I also have Susan Adams as primary, she's been on the board before, she's very experienced, and Stephen Zolman as an alternate.
I also have Susan Adams as primary and Stephen Zolman as alternate.
Very much, I got my direction for that, we'll present that when we get up there and do the Board of Directors meeting up there at the June 12th meeting, thank you very much. Now, let's move into the IAs, the Potter Valley, it's our standing item for council to discuss the Potter Valley project and ongoing basement, or ongoing basis, and also we moved the, yeah, B2, which was the written comments, we have the writ, we all should have our written comments here, and you wanted to discuss that, go ahead.
So we'll discuss the written comment first, so do we wanna read the written comment at all, to the folks, so they know what we're discussing?
You could, yeah, absolutely.
We did receive a written comment, this is an item that does pertain to the Potter Valley project, so we're discussing it now at this time. This was sent in by David Fowler, he wrote, "Dear City of Cloverdale, I am writing to express my dismay at the extra flyer included with my water and sewer bill this month. I am shocked that the city would spend my tax and/or utility bill money to produce and distribute wild misinformation and to engage in such blatant fear-mongering. You present a supposed before-and-after illustration with the before image showing beautiful green hillsides, wild blue rivers, a full Lake Mendocino, and an operating power station, birds flying, a deer on the Eel River, and lush agricultural fields. The after shows yellowing hillsides, narrow rivers, a very low Lake Mendocino, a broken power station, a deer skull on the Eel River, dead fish, dead birds, dead agricultural, agriculture fields, and oh, and let's not forget, the for-sale signs and flames around the homes in the lower left. Your conclusory, conclusory, conclusury, statement that the Potter Valley decommissioning project will significantly impact local water supply reliability, including dramatic effects on ecosystems, agriculture, recreation, fire suppression, and drinking water is very inflammatory and without any basis in fact. Here are just a few of the city's claims, stand up to independent, here are, here are how just a few of the city's claims stand up to an independent fact-checking." So there's five points here. One, the Van Arsdale diversion has only provided approximately 5% of the flow in the Russian River over the past 20 years. The source is California Department of Water Resources, California Data Exchange Center, and PG&E diversion volume reports. Point number two, the proposed project includes maintaining the Van Arsdale diversion at a volume slightly greater than the historical average by installing the new Eel-Russian facility, a pump station in the Eel River at current location of the Cape Horn Dam. The source for that is a draft application for surrender of license and application for non-project use and project lands. Point number three, the removal of both the Cape Horn and Scott dams will improve the ecosystem of the Eel River upstream and of the dams by reopening many miles of water courses for salmon and romany, which were cut off by the construction of the dams. Source is California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Point number four, the Potter Valley powerhouse is not operated since 2017, and is not planned to be reopened whether or not the dams are removed. The source for that is PG&E. Point number five, Lake Mendocino will receive more flow than current during the winter months, and therefore refill faster after summer, drawdown. Source is draft application. The letter goes on to say, "There are more items that can be added to this list, but space does not allow. Just for the record, I have no connection whatsoever with PG&E or any local or federal agency involved with this project, but I do have over 40 years' experience in surface water and groundwater management. Again, I am shocked that the City of Cloverdale would spend its citizens' money to engage in the distribution of such blatant campaign of misinformation and fear-mongering. Written sincerely, David Fowler." Would anybody like to make a comment about the letter?
I'll make a comment. Nobody really has a crystal ball, and nobody really knows what the future is going to be for the water in Cloverdale. We can all only make predictions, and the fact that our fire chief is concerned about the fact that Lake Pillsbury is going away and that Cloverdale could go up in flames, I think it's something that we all need to pay attention to and listen to our fire chief. And Cloverdale is not the only entity that's worried about the decommissioning of the dams. People from Lake County are worried about it. And Cloverdale was not allowed to come to the table when this was all planned, the decommissioning of the dams, and nor was Lake County. So I think we, we, the citizens of Cloverdale and the council, have a right to be concerned about the future of our water supply.
Just want to state in that letter, for the record, I do not know Mr. Fowler. The point number four, that was talking about how the power has not been produced since 2017, is my understanding the Potter Valley project has not produced power since July of 2021. What I'll say about the, the letter is it, it's a written comment that echoes many concerns I've heard from residents about the city's messaging related to the Potter Valley project decommissioning. At the April 9th City Council meeting, I was presented with the flyer and questioned just prior to the start of the meeting, did not have adequate time to review it. So at this time, my suggestion is that we remove this flyer from our website, reevaluate how we relate the facts regarding this potential decommission of the Potter Valley project and Cloverdale's water resiliency plan to the residents of our city.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler, I, you know, I appreciate you sending stuff in. There is a citizen advisory committee that myself and, and Mayor Lanz are on right now. I wish we could tell you absolutely everything that's going on in those meetings at this time. I don't think it's appropriate, but this right here, this is absolutely a concern. The reason that this went out, and we all decided to put this in our thing, is when we walked around prior to the town hall that we had, and you asked, there was about 70% of Cloverdale said, "What's going on with the water?" And they didn't know. So this is an informational thing. The highlight that we're doing is we are highlighting safety and health and safety. Todd and I, that's our two, that's Cloverdale's two big things on absolutely every meeting we're in. The health, so we have water, so we're not down to 55 gallons a day. That's not fear-mongering, that's truth, that's could be coming up. And this is coming from, from a lot of people, a lot of folks at PG&E, all the way up to, we have the Department of Interior that's involved in this now, national and federal. So anyway, it's not fear-mongering. I'm sorry that he, that he perceives it as that, and everybody absolutely has a right to put their stuff in. But this right here is on our website to educate people and let them know how important this water is and how important fighting for it is. So Todd and I will continue to fight that on that committee, and when, when it's appropriate and, and we want to, we put out the information the second we get it, as long as we can put it out. There's things we can't say, and we will let you know. So I know you want to, I know you want to take this out. You and I can have that discussion a little bit, I think, maybe. I think this is good. We didn't have anything on our website, now we've got something. Is it a scare tactic? I don't know, that's reality. Anybody that's been through one of these big fires, whether it be the Tubbs Fire, whether it be any of the fires that were in Geyserville, when you don't have water, guess what? Start running. We, we're right now in Cloverdale to the point on fires, we can put one house out, if we get two going at the same time, we got a problem. You know what I mean? That's where we're at on water. That's the safety aspect of it. That's coming from, from our fire chief, who was down Palisades Fire. He was putting out a, he told the story of where he was putting out a store as the governor walked by and the hoses drained because they didn't have the water. They ran out of water, and you saw what happened down there. These are destructive fires, they will come through and take an entire town out. So fighting for water is something we're going to continue to do. I would like to see this stay in there, stay on our website at least. It will probably not be mailed out with every bill. I don't think everybody needs a monthly reminder, but it is on the website. Please look at it. Also, you have the folks, this isn't, that's just the Cloverdale part of it, but you have Lake County, you have nine different federal tribes, you have Lake Pillsbury, there's a whole alliance up there of Pillsbury landowners up there that are fighting this. This is a total of 650,000 people that will be affected by this. So it isn't a, it isn't fear-mongering, it's reality. Like I said, I thank Mr. Fowler. Please send them in, we will discuss these. That's why we have this as a standing item, and we'll be discussed at absolutely every meeting. And if we have any updates or any new information, by all means, you will be the first to know it. Myself or Mayor Lanz will put that out, and we will sit up here and discuss it. So, thank you very much, Kevin. Did you have anything on that?
I think that wraps it up, thank you. I think Alex wanted to mention something.
I just want to make one small point of clarification in the light. Last meeting, there's been reference to ad hoc committee. I want to clarify, today, the last member reversed it. That's what it is, it's not a formal ad hoc committee that is formed by the council, but rather, you know, in the past, council has directed work on this issue, and so the mayor put together a group of folks to help him with the work on this issue. Now, it doesn't make any binding decisions for the city or. I want to put that clarification out, because I know sometimes the term ad hoc committee is, excuse me, a short.
Thank you, Alex. Anything else on that? Anybody have any comments? Public have any comments? Okay.
I think, you know, we decided to put it on the website, and we decided to include it in the past water bill, and I think it's important. And I know it was a majority of us that decided that. So I'm all for keeping it on the website.
One thing I want to say too is, Andreas, thank you. I mean, you, you are passionate about this, you're jumping in on this, you're doing exactly what you need to do. And, and all of council is. And we will continue to have these discussions, and like I said, there's, I mean, Mayor Lanz is up in, he's getting more information as we speak up, up in Lake County, which could change what we've got going on here. There's information coming in nonstop, and he will let us know exactly where we're at. We're trying to stay on top of this as good as we, you know, as, as quick as we can, as, as thorough as we can. And, I mean, we're getting hit with meetings like, hey, can you come down? We got a meeting in 10 minutes. With who? Just come down, you know, that type of stuff. And these are some big, heavy hitters that we're having meetings with. Our city attorney's involved, city manager's involved, and we're, we're giving it everything we got. So have some faith here, you know, we're working for everybody, and, and we will pass on the information as we get it, and I really appreciate your patience. We're, if, if fear-mongering is being perceived, that's not the intention at all. It's just a reality check of, hey, here's what's going on. You know, we are really crucial in water right now. So, so stay abreast of it, ask one of us on the street, give one of us a call, email one of us, we will answer to our fullest extent as much as we can. So I appreciate it, and thank you.
Final comment on that would be to the fear-mongering. As we walked around, and, and as it was stated, 70% of the people in town had no idea what was going on. So as that brochure went into everybody's water bill, what, over 7,000 residents received that in their water bill, it fired up one individual. So that still tells me that people are still not engaging and believe that this is happening. So it really is happening.
Any other comments? Anyone?
Quick point of order, Vice Mayor. And correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Marquez, you had a recommendation, is that a motion on the floor to change something on our website, or is it just?
You know, I think, I think, so this is, you know, this is our conversation about the written correspondence, we're not talking about the Potter Valley project yet. This is the first item that we delayed. It sounds like the rest of the council, you know, feels pretty firmly about the, the letter, so, you know, I'm, I'm going to refrain from making a motion about that.
All right, let's move, we're done with that, let's move on to subcommittee reports.
Do we have time to talk about the Potter Valley project? Because I was.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, let's, let's stay on it if you want. Go ahead.
So I guess one of these, couple of the, the information that we're sharing with the community, I think we do all feel the same about protecting our community, having water resiliency, and I'm really happy to see that water resiliency is an item on Subcommittee for Infrastructure. You know, I think it's one of the things I do want to just make sure that we're, we're giving out facts. And so there's been some misinformation regarding the fact that Cloverdale was invited to be a part of the NOI parties. That is history, it's, it's very well stated. There's many, many meetings that, that, that was a part of our, our own city council meeting, so that, that is a fact, we were invited. And then as well as some of the curtailments that were pertaining to the drought in 2022, you know, this was the second year of a drought. Who knows when, how long the drought was going to go? So I think hindsight, you can look back and say maybe some of those measures are pretty extreme, but those were measures that were taken during a second year of drought. So I think we can't use those, that instance as, as a long-term sort of opinion that people have, what's going to be the future. There's always a possibility of droughts in the future. So, you know, the, having water resiliency on the infrastructure, I think is a great way to combat that. As we start to engage in these conversations with the other stakeholders, there's one thing that I would like to make a point about, and this is, the Eel River seems like they're very, the Eel, the Eel River watershed seems like they're very well-protected, and they get a lot of their needs met. So one, one of the things, I would like to see the results of any studies surrounding water poaching in Mendocino and Humboldt Counties. I'm wondering if the, the two-basin proposal takes this lost water into account with efforts to mitigate water poaching? Could this water be added to the diversion towards the Russian River watershed? And that's what I got.
And, and those are, those things have been, have come up in meetings, and I don't think they called it water poaching on that. It is? I mean, but I think one of the big things was, was the water rights, the junior, correct me if I'm wrong, but junior and senior water rights, and, and a lot of the agriculture around here, these guys have, see, and, and that's kind of a blurred area right now because of, of the importance of water. Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
That's right. The junior water rights holders pulling water from the river, they do have the right to do that, and I'm not a water rights expert.
Right.
Vice Mayor, just to clarify, what I mean by water poaching is people illegally stealing water for cannabis grows, and that's very much an unchecked thing in Humboldt and Mendocino County.
Oh, right. And you know, and, and as far as the cannabis grows, I have not heard that come up. I have not heard that come up. Everybody's gearing towards meetings with PG&E, with the, the diversion, how that's going to happen, and cannabis grows has not come up. Is that a problem in Humboldt and the Emerald Triangle? Absolutely it is.
Yeah, illegal.
Yeah.
Water stealers.
So, you know, that hasn't come up, so I don't, I don't have any good facts or anything on that. I have no, I have no comment on that.
I think it's maybe something that, you know, maybe our city manager can look into, and if there's been any studies about how much water is lost, possibly that's something that maybe if, if that was mitigated, we can argue for that water.
Right. And that, I think that's something that, if they're doing it illegally now, no matter what kind of restrictions we put on them, it's just going to, we're going to be fighting it nonstop. They're going to figure out a different way to get that water, you know? You're dealing with liquid gold right now, so, you know? And like I said, is, is with this Potter Valley, it's, Mayor Lanz is, is deep into it, he's a lot more knowledgeable about it. I'm in on these, but he's having meetings that I'm not even pervy to. But as we get information, and I believe there'll be information coming out of tonight from where he's at right now, up in the Lake County Town Hall, he will pass that on to us, and we're just trying to keep people informed on this to make those decisions. Things that haven't come up, that, that will most likely come up, and I'm glad you brought it up, and thank you, but that hasn't been looked at at all on the, but Potter Valley's, it's a thing, you know, we're, we're really watching it, and it's starting to sound like PG&E is, is, you know, what they do is they're backing out of it. You know, it's, it's a business decision for them, and it's nothing against PG&E. There's been a lot of documents requested that are protected that we can't get, and it's a tough, it's a tough deal. You're fighting for documents that you want to see that could help your case, and, and we're just not able to get them. So that's where we're at. You get dead in the, you, you gain some ground, you become dead in the water on the next meeting, so.
We got to find our leverage wherever we can get it.
We are, believe me, we are. With the help of our city attorney, and we've got some other folks working with us in town that are really giving us a hand, and it is a huge lift for them, and they are, they're really working that angle, and we're relying on them, and they're relying on us, and we're hoping something goes down. So we'll keep you posted. All right? Any other questions on Potter Valley? You good?
I wanted to say something. I hope that in the future, because nobody has all the answers, especially, none of us. I mean, we're trying to learn as much as we can about this issue, but if we could keep words like misinformation and facts are facts out of our discussions and maybe check our egos at the door, because nobody has all the answers. And so that's just my hope for the future of the council people on this dais.
Can I respond to that? When I say facts are facts, what I'm stating is that there's meetings where we were invited to join the NOI party, so that is a fact. It's, I'm not creating that, I'm not assuming anything, it's a literal fact. I can, I can give you all dates on if you want it, and you can watch the videos, so. Thank you very much.
All righty, are we done with Potter Valley? Any, any questions from the public? Okay? Up here, we're done? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Jay's, Subcommittee Reports. Any Subcommittee Reports?
I have one. On May 21st, the Board of the Russian River Watershed Association went on a yearly field trip. First, we toured restoration sites along Dry Creek that were created to benefit natural spawning areas, and then we visited the Worm Springs Fish Hattery to learn about the Coho Salmon Program. We ended the field trip with a lecture by Kent Guile, the Director of Engineering for Sonoma Water. We learned about the history of the Worm Springs Dam and the Lake Sonoma reservoir. The Worm Springs Dam was created in 1982 to create flood control, water supply, along with recreation. And it was like a wonderful field, educational field trip that we all enjoyed.
Good. So a couple weeks ago, I attended the Sonoma State University Latino Cultural Graduation Ceremony to represent Cloverdale along with other elected officials throughout the county, and I was very proud to see our own Cloverdale local, Nady Calvillo, was a student speaker for the evening. Very inspiring speech, and just want to thank Nady for her service to strengthen the City of Cloverdale through her work at the Citrus Fair, former key club member and current Kiwanis Club member. Also, last Sunday, I was in Healdsburg for the naming of the Abel de Luna Community Center along with other elected officials throughout Sonoma County. Was really proud to see that the City Council of Healdsburg was honoring former mayor, the first Latino mayor of Healdsburg, by naming their community center. Really a great way to set the tone for our county. Also, Cloverdale Regional Library will be starting a Lunch at the Library series this June 9th. There's a summer lunch program for kids 0 to 18. This will be followed by reading programs. The library is also an unmandated cooling center, so it's a great place to cool off during the summer, and get into some books and things like that. And also for adults, there's Irish folk music duo Jimmy Murphy and Suzuki Katie on Saturday, May 31st from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., and that's free at our Cloverdale Regional Library. Thank you.
Just did that, we did Subcommittee, Councilmember.
I think we kind of are doing that right now.
Gotcha, yeah, we kind of got through those. Okay. Legislative reports, letters, support, opposition, I see none. City manager reports, do we have any?
We, we did draft a letter for submission to the Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors that Councilmember Lasky and I think Councilmember Marquez was going to bring to them, and it's actually, it's just requesting that they consider reducing the price or donating the building. If you want to add anything, Councilmember Lasky, it's, it's, I think that the point was to go meet with the Board of Directors and plead, plead our case and leave a letter stating the case.
Further review, the Boys and Girls Club don't have, they do not have a public meeting for public comments, so I'm reaching out to a specific board member to plead our case. case.
Alex, any report? Thank you. All right. Council direction on any future agenda items? Let's call it adjournment at 7:10. Thank you all for showing up.